All right, we do have a quorum, and so we will call this meeting to order. First up is citizens' comments. Do we have any?
No, sir.
All right. Item one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court on April the 9th, 2019. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
During and on, Judge, I move we approve the minutes as presented for the Commissioners Court regular session of April the 9th.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the minutes of April the 9th, 2019, as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item two, consider and take action to accept various bonds and oaths for filing purposes only. These were the bonds and oaths that we had on the agenda last week. Anne Marie, I believe you spoke with the bonding company?
Yeah, there's no issue with her being married. There was nothing to it.
Okay. Any questions concerning these bonds and oaths?
Is this a new bonding company? Are... okay. They're just once-a-year deal?
When they're up for reappointment and things like that.
I got you.
Any other comments? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, seconded by Commissioner Tulley, to accept the various bonds and oaths for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Item passes. Item three, consider and take action on renewal of contract with Dr. Taft's office for mental health services for inmates in the jail. Sheriff?
Good morning, Court. This is a program that we started back in 2015. Since then, legislature has met several times, and this will get us in compliance with the Sandra Bland Act that was passed. And since 2015, the price has not went up. And in the contract negotiations, of course, we just used Dr. Taft's office for a year now. They've been doing an excellent job. And in this contract, I was able to talk to them and extend it. So this is actually a two-year contract at the same price. There is some new legislation in Austin right now that's moving. And I believe the way this contract is written, that this will suffice for the new legislation coming down also.
Questions for the sheriff?
If it does pass, there would be no addendums to this or additional costs?
There should not be. And if there was, there is an exit clause in the contract.
Right, so the exit clause. Okay.
But I do think this will cover.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Commissioner McCam?
What is the new legislation that they're trying to come down with this year?
They're actually, it's a, if I understand it correctly, they, if somebody, when somebody comes into jail, we have a mental health screening form that we are required to fill out. And the way the new screening form is, a lot of the inmates flag. So we have 12 hours to notify the county judge's office that this inmate flagged and could have possible mental health issues. We've been doing that for years. But now, they have also added that, once we give that notification, that inmate will have to be seen by a mental health professional or the mental health authority for the county. And the mental health authority or mental health professional will actually have to fill out a written report and provide that report to the county judge's office. And the county judge's office will, at that time, make a determination of what he's gonna do. So actually, the new part is the mental health folks writing a report, and that report being released to the mental health court.
And this contract covers that?
Yes. She's already writing reports on every inmate that she sees. So what I do is just gather that report and forward it to the county judge's office.
Just gonna increase the volume?
Yes, sir.
And therefore increase in cost because there's a higher volume they're gonna be doing?
Yes, sir.
And therefore, we refer to that in Commissioners Court as another wonderful thing from Austin called an unfunded mandate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Our current cost on this, just to run down the history on it, after Sandra Bland Act passed, what was that, four years ago? Two years ago?
It was two years ago.
Two years ago.
And I believe the whole act is not a requirement until 2020. But we've been preparing ourselves. We're ready to go.
Okay. I know that it was after we'd set the budget that year-
Yes, sir.
-that we had to come back. And it was $72,000, which it has stayed at since then. But the added portion is a more in-depth study, and you and I had spoken about this before, somewhere around $240, I think, a report?
Well, it depends on if they want to do the crisis evaluation. And a crisis evaluation is $275.
Of all of the ones that are currently submitted, as we do now in compliance with that, how many of those do you think would be crisis under the new legislation?
Normally, if we have an inmate that is in a crisis situation, what we try to do is contact the Andrews Center to come out and do a crisis evaluation. And if they are in crisis at that moment, then we start working with the county judge's office to try to find housing for that individual. But of course, it also depends on what kind of charge they're in jail for, because we have worked with prosecutors' offices also. So it just depends. But the Andrews Center doesn't charge us anything for that evaluation.
Okay. And that does qualify in the legislation-
Yes, they don't have to.
... as meeting, having that mental health authority write that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You find them to be responsive to your calls when you have them?
The counselor is there 30 hours a week. She does an outstanding job. And of course, the other office, the other people in Dr. Taft's office, we work with pretty much on a weekly basis, and they're easy to work with.
Okay. Commissioner Tulley?
I have none.
Any further? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. The only other thing is this contract, if the court decides to approve it, does require my signature.
Okay. With that, do we have a motion?
Moved to approve with authorization for the Sheriff Hill House to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the renewal and authorize the sheriff to sign contract with Dr. Taft's office for mental health services for the jail inmates. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor?
Thank you, Court.
Item passes. Thank you, Sheriff. Item number four is consider and take action on contract with Tyler Technologies for the upload of historical images to the Eagle System in the county clerk's office. Mary Margaret?
Yes, I'm wanting to get money to upload about 4 million images from 1990 all the way back. And it runs about $15,100. It'll come out either of the archive or the management fund.
Questions for our county clerk? Commissioner Tulley?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know much about it. But what I saw was the commencing on May the 1st, that it was gonna increase about $2,100 a month from like $4,500. What was the increase for?
That upload images.
So it'd be, that $15,100 would be spread out over the six...
No, I believe how the contract reads is that for the service of the upload, it is going to be $10,100 is what the actual, that's the services and some equipment that is going to be purchased. The $4,500 is in addition, is over the term that we have remaining on the contract. There is this, it says reoccurring fee, but that is for the disaster recovery and the web hosting that is done at the Plano location, I believe that is. So the actual upload and hardware for that is $10,100.
Okay. No further?
If I'm reading that correctly. No, I'm not reading that correctly.
Yeah, you are reading it correctly.
Yes. And of course, this contract, this is an amendment to the contract that we have in place that currently dictates the services. Each year, we are provided a 7% increase in images through the year to end the disaster recovery part of it. And due to the sheer volume that we have here of 4 million images, this one fast upload is gonna consume a lot of space in a short period of time. Whereas the 7% year-over-year would get us there, but it is not a cumulative grab. They can handle a 7% growth year-over-year. They could not handle, as the term was put before, a 77% growth in one year.
Okay.
I think that this is a fantastic thing that we're getting to do. We're finally getting all of our, and these are the land documents, these are property records, getting those digitized. We've got them digitized starting two years ago?
Yes, no, about a year and a half.
About a year and a half ago. And now getting them uploaded. I will tell the court that the second phase of this is to then get these indexed so that they will be fully accessible online. But today, we're doing just with the upload.
This will take us back how far, did you say?
Back, all the way back.
To the 1,800s?
That's correct.
Okay. I guess in reality, when we look at the volume that we're doing here, this is, if you subtract out the annual recurring cost, this is less than a penny a sheet. It's pretty inexpensive.
I agree. The thing that I find most attractive about it is that no longer are we dependent upon the microfilm, you know, that is, we've paid for years for microfilm to be stored. It clears a lot of hurdles. And in my opinion, it protects our information that much more.
I guess the only other question I have, Judge, if we upload this to the Tyler Technologies slash Eagle server in Plano, which is in their cloud, as their service, shall we say, if we, two years from now, decide to change vendors, that information is ours. They just download it to a different location.
Actually, the files will be here and replicated today.
They're replicated there. Okay. I feel better. Okay. So we're not...
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Part of that cost is that they're gonna add some storage to the server because we don't have enough storage to maintain what we have here. So then it would be here first and then replicated. What it looked like in the contract to me is they're probably gonna replicate it with the drives there and then bring it here and do the same thing so that they don't have to wait for us to upload all those images, which also inundate our internet speeds. So that's what I read in the contract. But yes, it would be here as well.
Okay. And that'll be on the virtual servers?
That's correct, for the disaster recovery. So everything should be replicated. And actually, whenever they do something in the office here, it's local, and then it replicates disaster recovery to their location. And then they have multiples on them. So there should be no issue if we, if we had a total loss of this building, they should have plenty of space.
They have everything.
Right.
And same thing happens if their data center goes down or there's a fire or something. It's everything is...
They have multiple, it's actually splintered in multiple locations.
Okay. Thank you.
County attorney reviewed this, and he had no issues with it as well. Any further questions, comments? Will entertain a motion.
I guess this is authorization for you to sign?
The judge to sign.
Judge to sign?
And I will add that we have cleared all the hurdles, that this is something that can be paid from the county clerk's archival fee.
Motion to approve with authorization for the county judge to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, seconded by Commissioner Tulley, to approve contract with Tyler Technologies for the upload of historical images to the Eagle System for the county clerk's office. Any further comments? With judge's authorization to sign. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item number five, consider and take action to provide labor and equipment for road repair for the Chandler Cemetery Association located in Precinct 3. Commissioner McCam?
Yes, the Chandler Cemetery Association approach may want to do a little edge work, mainly is what it is, not really road repair. But they got three roads that go into the cemetery, and they all dead-end at the back. And what's happened is traffic's cutting across that and causing mud holes at the end of each road. And I told them I'd approach it, and see if that's something I was able to do. Chandler Memorial Cemetery is a designated Texas Historic Cemetery and dates back to 1880. So it's something that's permissible for us to do. I think what I'm gonna have to do is just add some wrap on the corners at the end of each corner.
Questions for Commissioner McCam? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion that I can repair the roads at Chandler Memorial Cemetery.
I'll second this motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Tulley, to provide labor and equipment for road repair for the Chandler Cemetery Association located in Precinct 3. All those in favor? Item passes. Item number six, consider and take action to accept the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Three financial statement for fiscal year 2017 and 18, budget for fiscal year 2018-19, and the required affidavit submitted by ESD III Secretary of Treasury. Commissioner Gisland?
Mark Wade.
Yes, Mark Wade.
I'd send it out to the court for their review. I'll entertain any questions they may have concerning the financial statements for ESD III.
Any questions?
There are no questions, Judge. I move that we approve the financial statements for 2017-18, as well as the budget for 1819 for ESD III, as submitted by the Secretary of Treasury, Mark Wade.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to accept the three documents from Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Three. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Number seven, receive financial reports. Thank you, ma'am. And today, we have JP 2. And just for clarification, it's up to the department as to when they, if they wish to report weekly or monthly. In the statute, it's up to them to decide. That's why we seem to get one every week. And so it's whatever's the least burdensome for them, and we give them the leeway to do that. But these will be available for viewing after court in the county clerk's office. Item number eight, consider and take action on payroll distribution and accounts cash sheet. Thank you, ma'am. Item nine, consider and take action on submitted contracts. Ms. Nicholson?
Yes, sir. In your packet, there should be a copy of the Oracle contract. This contract is for the elevator service and inspections. Prior to this, we've had separate contracts for each building. This brings them all together on one contract. It has reduced the amount that we pay slightly. Clint worked with Oracle on it. Judge McKinnon was involved.
Gentlemen, I apologize. We did not get that contract into the packet. Basically, it is a reduction of $200 a month, basically by getting all of our elevators. We have two elevators and a dumbwaiter over at the library. It puts all three on the same contract, and that's what has allowed us to realize this $200 a month savings. This is a three-year contract. The courthouse is currently out from under contract, though they were still servicing and maintenanceing it. But it was out from under, and so was the dumbwaiter. The one under this building was under contract until June, and we just had the opportunity to put them all together and realize that savings. The county attorney has reviewed it. He changed, we got them to agree to the change of venue to Henderson County. And originally, they had proposed a five-year contract, and we got them down to three. If the court so wishes, we can bring this back next week, because I just realized that we did not get it in the packet. If y'all would like to review the contract and not take action today, I am very comfortable and confident in it. So is county attorney. So whatever the pleasure of the court is, and I apologize.
I never received it. Did you send it out to all of us?
No, sir, I did not. I...
I was meaning, Jennifer, did you send it out to all of us?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, that's, okay. I was looking to see if I'd missed something, and...
That falls squarely on myself. I took the lead on that.
Okay.
So again, we can hold this off till next week, and I didn't realize that it wasn't in the packet.
Oh. I don't see any reason necessarily to hold it off. If you have reviewed it, you're comfortable with it. You're the one that's going to be taking the live fire, considering the elevator has been in this building down twice in the last 30 days. And they're going to assume responsibility on this elevator immediately.
Yes, sir. That is the case. We were down two weeks ago. Elevator went down on Friday, and we had issue getting a technician here. And I believe it was the following Tuesday? Or was it Wednesday before we got a technician actually here? Doing something like that. And we did. We have found a preferred method of contact. Before, it was just a phone call. But now, we have protocols set up that it is an email so that we receive an actual number, a confirmation number. So the past methods of making a phone call proved inadequate in this last time. But I feel confident in our new protocols where we have actually a line and a number that we can use.
And there is an exit clause in this contract?
Yes, there is. But we are responsible for 50% of the term if we do decide to leave early.
And what did you say the term was?
Three years. It's $905 a month.
And that's primarily on the two elevators?
Yes, sir. Our largest liability on that would be $16,000. That is, if we signed it and then immediately killed it.
Okay.
As I mentioned before, we can bring this back next week, because I do apologize for not.
And that is authorization for you to sign?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's up to the court. I'm okay to move forward.
You and Clint have already reviewed it?
Yes, sir. And it is a very extensive wording. It's wording that makes you wish to pull your hair out, because there is clauses in there that all of us would have issue with. But due to the very nature of elevator operations and maintenance, the liability that they take on, they have a team of attorneys that put every clause available to it that they can to insulate themselves. So... I have no problem with moving forward, but honestly, if the court wishes to wait a week, I don't see where we have any other option than to go with this company at this time.
I agree with that last comment. Moved to approve the contract with the judge's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, seconded by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the contract with Oracle for three years for elevator maintenance. Any further discussion?
I'd like to see a copy of the contract-
I will get it to you.
... immediately after court.
Shall be done. Any further comments? Thank you, Court. All those in favor? Item passes. Let me get everything put back together. Item 10, consider and take action on right-of-way permits. Item 11, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments.
I have a few of those this week. With regards to the JP's collective conference with their clerks, these are all new people. They've never been in conferences in the office. I haven't seen those offices lately. Requesting continuing education for new employees.
Questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Tulley?
None.
Entertain a motion?
So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 12, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, sir. This morning, the totals for 2019 is $268,022.96.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have no questions.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Gisland?
I don't think so, Judge.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the bills for 2019 of $268,022.96. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 13, consider and take action on submitted plans. Item 14 is open and consider bids. Ms. Nicholson?
This morning, I've got the aggregate materials, road materials bids. This will be a short award term until the end of December. That way, we can get all the road materials back on the same cycle. I sent a spreadsheet showing the amounts that were bid on each item by each company.
Questions?
I have none right now.
Commissioner McCam?
I have no question.
Commissioner Gisland?
Well, what's the proposal here? Are we not going to approve all of these, or...
That's y'all's decision.
It appears that...
One of them out of Illinois.
Well, I mean, that was my first question. I assume that this is a local company, but it's not on the information. Green Dream International LLC out of Erie, Pennsylvania. I think that's probably the best contract, you know? If they will bring this material from Erie, Pennsylvania for only $42 a ton, that's pretty good material coming out of that part of the country. So where is this company really located?
That is the information that was provided. They did not send a list of where the different pits are or other companies that they may be purchasing from here locally. The information you have is everything that I have.
So on the letterhead, this response came out of Erie, Pennsylvania?
Yes, sir.
It's good to know, Rich. You've got people reading your newspaper up in Erie, Pennsylvania. You have a wider distribution than you thought, huh? It looks like Titan Trucking is extremely competitive on the trucking side.
I will say...
Do we use anything out of Arlington or Arkansas? Have you ever used them?
Nope. Is it permissible by state procurement regulations that when a bid is received and you open it and put this together, can you call these people and find out where they're located?
I would have to call every respondent, but in that instance, as long as we contacted everyone to confirm that information or to verify that information, yes.
I think we have to know that, taking Commissioner McCam's last question. If they have a local pit, needless to say, for us to drive to Arlington or for them to bring it here, there's something wrong with these numbers because I don't believe they're bringing it from here. And just like my earlier question about Erie, Pennsylvania, there must be something local.
It is permissible...
As long as they pick up at Arlington.
Yep.
It is permissible for us to ask for further information?
Yes.
As long as you ask the same information of every vendor, that's being considered.
Well, I will say that this is a complicated bid, one of the more complicated ones that we've seen when it comes to material. I am pleased to see we've got more bidders.
So am I. At least we're not looking at those buy boards that we did last year. That was in Arizona, Longview.
And that Arlington, you know, pickup's $10. $10 y'all achieve.
But if we have to drive to Arlington...
That's a big...
And the reason the deliberation for those in the audience is that this could equate to about $2.8 million worth of expenditures. So please bear with us as we chew this thing up. Make the suggestion that we do request that information and bring it back next week.
I think it would be advisable.
Commissioner McCam?
I'd go along with it.
Commissioner Tulley?
I don't know where they were at.
You know, not being a commissioner, but knowing that there is a company out there that is contracting, they may set a sanitation toilet in San Antonio, but they contracted somebody in San Antonio to set it. So I'm sure that's probably what this Pennsylvania place is -- has to be doing.
Could be.
We don't know that, though.
No, we don't know that, but I mean, that's...
Well, I'm sure. I would agree with you wholeheartedly. I'm 99.9% positive that's what's going on. The thing is, we still don't know where it is.
What I'm hearing here is we need a little more information on their locations. Any other information we would like to have? Okay, ma'am. We'll pass on consideration of this today. And Ms. Nicholson, you'll get that for us next week?
Yes, sir.
Or two weeks? No, that's right.
No, it's next week.
That's right. Sorry, next week. No other bids?
No, sir.
All righty. Brings us to item 15, which is consider and take action to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Tulley, to adjourn. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much for being here. We're going to...